Okay. Hello. Welcome to our meeting. Welcome to all you students back. Must be schools back in, right?
Yeah.
Yes? Looks like I have a lot of Rancho students here tonight. Okay, so we're gonna have our call meeting to order. And our roll call will be by our City Clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
If you'd all please rise, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Councilwoman Amanda Rigby. And our invocation following that will be by Sister Maureen Brown of St. Thomas More Catholic Church.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
He'd like to remain standing? Let us take a moment of quiet and to bring ourselves to the center of our quiet within ourselves, where the Spirit dwells. We let go of those chattering committees in our heads and in our hearts, let them to be silent, and to bring ourselves to this place. Most abundant God, look lovingly on this group gathered here, the City Council members and the residents who also want Vista City to thrive as you wish it to thrive. During this meeting, as they discuss and deliberate on issues of importance to this community, help them to be guided by your Spirit. May they be wise in their discernment, balanced in their judgment, fair in their decision-making, and visionary in their planning. May all here present, who may have differing views, listen to each other and be guided by their common goals. May they always be mindful in their words and actions of what is best for the Vista May all of the deliberations having to do with justice, public safety, development, and the environment be made in the best interest of the common good. We ask all of this in your good name. Amen.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of the agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one change this evening. It has to do with presentation number two. And since the publishing of the agenda, the proclamation declaring Russell Wilson Day in the City of Vista has had a date change to Friday, September 12, 2014.
And tonight, we actually have three presentations. And the first one is a presentation for Carol Wise Herrera. And the second is a proclamation for Russell Wilson. And the third is a proclamation that, well, I don't have it right here. It's declare in September 2014 National Preparedness Month in the City of Vista. So I think, and maybe the council would like to join me down there, and we're gonna do these proclamations here. So our first proclamation is for Carol Wise Herrera. I saw her back there. Come on down, Carol, please. You're being honored tonight. So I'll read the proclamation here. Whereas Carol Wise Herrera is a recipient of the Vista Education Foundation Educator Lifetime Achievement Award in honor and recognition of her outstanding accomplishments and commitment to education. Whereas born and raised in Pennsylvania, Carol holds a Bachelor of Science degree from, oh dear, Mississauga?
Mississauga.
Mississauga, University of Dallas, Pennsylvania, a master's degree in reading from Scranton University in Pennsylvania, and an administrative credential from San Diego State University. Carol's taught every elementary grade level in both public and private schools, in addition to gifted and talented education and college classes. She was a principal of Kelly Elementary School in Carlsbad, California, for over 16 years. During her tenure, the school was recognized as a distinguished school award winner by the state of California, and was cited as the top-performing school in the state. Whereas in the mid-1970s, Carol was hired by the Army-Navy Academy Adult Division to create a testing and reading program for enlisted Marines and their dependents at Camp Pendleton, El Toro, and Miramar Naval Air Station. This program was part of the G.I. Bill to assist individuals in competing high school. And whereas Carol has been a recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award, the Golden Oak Award from Del Norte PTA, the San Diego Reading Association Award, and has served as a consultant for McGraw-Hill Publishing Company, and an evaluator for Western Association Schools and Colleges, and Carol has served in the capacities of School Board President, Vice President, Clerk, and member of the Vista Unified School District for 12 years, and is about to begin another four-year uncontested term. And whereas Carol consistently focuses on the essential elements of equality and enriching education experience for all students, truly making Vista Unified School District the model of educational excellence. Now therefore, the Vista City Council wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Carol Wise Herrera for her service to the Vista Unified School District and the community of Vista, and congratulate her as a recipient of the Vista Education Foundation Educator Lifetime Achievement Award. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, September 10, 2014, as Carol Wise Herrera Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations.
(Applause)
I'm sure that most of that doesn't mean too much to all you young people, but you know, in my lifetime, what I have done is I've tried to advocate as much as I possibly could for your good and for the education that you receive. And you know what? You come from Vista schools, and you should be very proud of them because we're moving in a very positive, good direction. And so I want to thank the City Council for this award, this presentation tonight, and I want to thank all you young people out there because you indeed are the future of Vista. Thank you.
(Applause)
Congratulations to you. Russell is amazing here. Okay, I'm gonna read this. Whereas, on May 20, 2014, Russell Wilson of the Boys and Girls Club of Vista was named California State Youth of the Year. And whereas the Youth of the Year is the highest honor a Boys and Girls Club member can receive, recognizing outstanding contributions to family, school, and community, as well as overcoming personal challenges and obstacles. Russell overcame adversity as a young child, having entered the foster care system. Russell became an active member of the Vista Club, and through hard work and healthy choices, he left his troubled past behind, choosing pursuit of success and achievement of goals. And whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Vista provides a safe place to learn and grow, ongoing relationships with caring adult professionals, life-enhancing programs, and character development experiences, and hope and opportunity, Russell possesses a caring, healing heart and shares his extraordinary giving spirit with the club staff and members alike. Russell is currently a student at Miracosta College, planning to transfer to UC Santa Cruz, and gives back to children in need by mentoring and teaching music at the Vista Club. And whereas Russell lives a life of dedication and purpose, readily helping others, we know he will continue to thrive and share his blessings with everyone around him. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council hereby congratulate Russell Wilson, and being chosen the 2014 California State Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of America, and hereby proclaim Friday, September 12, as Russell Wilson Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations to Russell.
(Applause)
One more, and I need Fire Chief Minnick. Ah, he's way ahead of me here. Okay. Okay. And we'll read this proclamation. This is, whereas, San Diego County residents have experienced the effects of various disasters, including earthquakes, extreme summer heat, and devastating wildfires. Whereas these disasters have resulted in the loss of life and have threatened the physical and economic safety of residents and their communities. Whereas Southern California is experiencing prolonged drought and extreme fire conditions similar to 2007 that highlight the importance of disaster preparedness, both at the individual and institutional levels. Whereas the aftermath of the 2003, 2007, and the recent May 2014 firestorms in San Diego demonstrated the necessity for careful and thorough emergency planning and preparedness among individuals, community groups, businesses, and local governments. And whereas the loss of life and property damage can be greatly reduced if appropriate emergency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency. Whereas the Vista City Council members are committed to recognizing and honoring the many fine efforts that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 as National Preparedness Month. And so I want to see if Chief Minnick would like to say something here.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I could just comment on disaster preparedness and why we're recognizing that this month is it's important for everyone in the community, and it's great to have such a great attended meetings. And we would like everybody to be, to work on preparedness. I'd like to encourage you to go to the readySanDiego.org website, and it gives us information, not only on the wildfires that the mayor just talked about, but any other disaster that may come to our community. So, thank you for that.
(Applause)
Okay, next on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the City Clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So with that, we have three items on our consent calendar. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept the consent calendar. Approve.
Okay, a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. There were no discussion items scheduled for tonight's hearing, so the next thing on our agenda is our public hearing. This is an appeal of a special use permit for Dollar General located at 1234 North Santa Fe Avenue. First, we will hear the staff report. Then the applicant will present his case. The public will then have an opportunity to comment. Those wishing to speak should present their speaker slips to the City Clerk, and then at that point, we'll call the speakers forward. Please come to the podium and speak directly into the microphone for no longer than three minutes. Following public comments, the applicant will have the opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Then the City Council will discuss the item. Once a public hearing is closed, there is no further opportunity for the public to address the council. So prior to the public hearing, I'd like to ask the City Council members if they have any disclosure statements. And you should disclose any conflicts of interest that disqualify you from participation, any information regarding expertise, contact, or site visits, including any resulting evidence you may consider in making your decision, or any other disclosure that would affect your ability to render a fair and impartial decision. So any disclosures down here?
No, Madam Mayor, I have not met with anyone regarding this issue, and I have nothing that would prohibit me from.
Okay. Nope, I see heads shaking, so I don't see anybody that has any disclosures. So then, the public hearing is now open, and the Community Development Director, John Conley, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As noted, this is an appeal of a special use permit request from the Planning Commission's decision on July 15 of this year. It was a request for a bargain basement store and off-site sale of beer and wine, which is a Type 20 ABC license for property at 1234 North Santa Fe Avenue. The project location is shown in the overhead. It is a approximately 10,000-square-foot suite that's a corner end cap, excuse me, in a 50,000-square-foot existing commercial center. It's about 10 years old, was finished in approximately 2004. It's located on the west side of North Santa Fe Avenue, just south of Indian Rock. The property is zoned mixed-use at 40 units per acre. This is a designation in the zoning code that allows both commercial and residential uses. The establishment of a bargain basement store at that location within the mixed-use zone, and as well as the off-site sale of alcohol, requires a special use permit. As you probably remember, a bargain basement store is defined as any store where the majority of items are sold for less than $5, or the majority of items sold in the store are used This is photographs of the existing location. As noted, it was built approximately 10 years ago, had some maintenance issues and some vandalism, which are shown in the photos. Landscaping's in fairly poor condition, as well as some of the signage. But the building and the parking lot's in fairly decent condition with some minor improvements. Existing elevations that were submitted by the applicant just show the condition of the existing building. One of the things that was proposed by Dollar General was to black out a number of the windows along the storefront to accommodate the racking within the store for their display areas. That was discussed at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did not recommend allowing for that. They asked that the applicant do facade improvements to screen the windows, including covering with stucco or using shutters, some type of architectural improvements. So the recommendations by the Planning Commission are included in the recommendations that are being forwarded to the City Council this evening. The floor plan just shows a number of racks within the space, racks around the edge. The alcohol would be down in the corner of the site that's shown in the red clouded area, down in the right-hand lower corner of the overhead. With respect to the bargain basement store application, the staff is recommending approval of a bargain basement store at this location. The reasoning for that is that the subject's commercial suite has been vacant for over two years and has been the victim of a number of vandalism incidents and other things during that time. The design guidelines require bargain basement store applications to improve the site through architectural landscape and parking area improvements. The landscaping, as noted, is in fairly poor condition, showing a lack of maintenance within the center. And the applicant has agreed to come in and replace all of the landscaping within the center, consistent with the original landscape plan, and maintain it to the city standards as long as they're in the store. The parking lot's in fairly good condition. The tenant would improve the architectural facade of the building, and so all of those conditions that were imposed by the council in terms of improving the property would be met by the applicant. When the city adopted the general plan in 2012, we had a number of policies addressing the North Santa Fe Commercial Corridor. One of those was to make a concerted effort to try to invite new businesses in that would improve the architectural facade of the existing buildings, redevelop the site, build new facilities, improve existing properties. And so with the conditions of approval that are imposed, the staff feels that this use would improve the property within the corridor, consistent with the general plan. With respect to the off-site sale of beer and wine, the staff is recommending denial of this request. The reason for that is that this location is within a census tract that is over-concentrated, and the off-sale license that would be issued by the council and the ABC would exacerbate that over-concentrated condition. One of the existing off-sale licenses that are currently within the census tract is located within the same center in the Arco AM PM store, and so there's availability of beer and wine in a very short distance from this location. Further, there's a total of eight existing off-sale licenses within 2,000 feet, which is a little less than a half-mile from the project site. And the project site is located within a crime beat that has a high crime index, which is considered anything over 120% of the citywide average. This sheriff's beat is currently 185.6% of the citywide average. And I want to note that in the staff report, it was shown as 136.1%. That was a 2012 crime rate number. The 2013 statistics, unfortunately, I did not include, so I apologize for that, but it has risen to approximately 50% from the 2012 number. The location of off-sale licenses is shown here for depiction of where the other licenses are located. As I mentioned, there are eight existing licenses within the North Santa Fe Corridor, stretching approximately from Beauvieure down to West Los Angeles Townsite Drive, and those include the location shown. I'm not gonna go through each one of them unless you have specific questions. And with that, the staff recommendation is to grant a special use permit for a bargain basement and to deny a special use permit for off-site sale of beer and wine at this location, 1234 North Santa Fe Avenue. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Do any council members have any questions for staff prior to the public testimony portion of the hearing?
I do. Yeah.
Councilmember Aguilera. It's blank on here, it doesn't show your name.
Just like my mind.[1291.28][1291.28](Laughter) Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a, for clarification, I guess I, like I said, a little blank. The 185%, what does that represent? I missed that part.
That is the sheriff's beat crime rate. Oh, I may have done something bad here.
Not the 136? It's listed.
The crime beat that the project is located in is Beat 305, and it basically covers the west side of North Santa Fe, pretty much along that whole commercial corridor. In 2012, the annual statistics for the crime rate within that beat were 136.1% of the citywide average. In 2013, they increased to 185.1 or 6, whatever, thank you, whatever was in this presentation.
It's a lot. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, or should we go to the speakers? Okay. Renee Glotzbaugh, followed by Erica Leary.
What about the applicants?
Oh, wait. Never mind. Wait, wait, wait. I'm not reading my notes here. First, we're gonna hear from the applicant for Dollar General. Will the applicant please come forward? An applicant has up to 10 minutes for his presentation. I apologize.
That's okay. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Steve Rawlings, and this evening I'm here on behalf of Dollar General Stores. And we had a, obviously, as you know, we had a hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and this evening we would just like for a little possible reconsideration of the Planning Commission's decision. And I did have a short presentation I'd like to make to you about Dollar General Stores. And is it? Just some quick background for you. I will tell you a little bit about the Dollar General Store. Dollar General is a, as you'll see, is a nationwide company. I've had the opportunity to work with them for about the last three years here in the state of California, as they have introduced their store to the state of California from as far south as Imperial to as far north up as Eureka, California, they have been rolling out stores. Right now, we presently have approximately about $150 to $175 Dollar General Stores open in the state of California, and part of our business model is to sell a small quantity of beer and wine, which is obviously part of the reason we're here this evening. So with that, I did want to just kind of give you a brief background on Dollar General Stores, because as I have found over the last two and a half, three years, that a lot of communities aren't familiar with the name, and they're not familiar with the company nor the products. And in this situation, we have no other stores in San Diego County. This would be the first store in San Diego County. We have several up in Riverside County, but probably the closest one is the City of Paris, which is probably an hour's drive for you. So if some of you aren't familiar with Dollar General, I understand, and that's my job here this evening, is to educate a little bit about Dollar General and ask for some consideration on our ability to be able to sell a little bit of beer and wine in our stores. So with that, Dollar General is one of the largest small-box convenient discount stores. We sell every, you know, lots of the major brands. We sell grocery and consumer-type of products. You can go into Dollar General Stores, and you can buy milk, and you can buy eggs, and you can buy laundry detergent, and you can buy liquid soap. And these are from the major brands such as Tide and Cheer and, you know, Campbell's Soup, Kellogg's Cereal, et cetera, et cetera. These are not off-brand type of products. This gives you some quick statistics. Obviously, we have 90,000-plus employees. It's on the Fortune 500. They have 10,000 stores in 40 states. I believe that that number is closer to 11,000 at this time. And as we said, the merchandise that we offer is major national brands, and we carry approximately 10,000 different types of products in each of our stores. Our typical store sizes are between 7,500 square feet and 12,500 square feet. It's a concept that works because it allows people to go in and buy all of those products that we consume on a regular basis: milk, and cereal, and diapers, and laundry detergent. And you can get in and out in less than 10 minutes and have the satisfaction of knowing that you paid very, very competitive prices for those products. Oops, sorry. That is a chart that kind of shows you a little bit about where our locations are. So if some of you are unfamiliar with Dollar General, it's because we're just simply not much on the west coast here. If you lived in North Carolina or Tennessee, boy, you can't help but know what a Dollar General Store is, and you've probably shopped at one dozens and dozens of times throughout your lifetime. But as you can tell, they are opening stores on a fairly rapid basis here in the state of California, and they're very, very well-received in every community that we have opened up a store in. Being a large corporation, we also pride ourselves on the fact that we do give back to the community and support a lot of great causes through corporate giving. And those are just some of the names of the charities that we benefit on an annual basis. This was the, these are some important slides that I wanted to take note of. This is what the inside of a store looks like. And quite honestly, it looks like just about any other grocery store that we may have been in here, used to here in the state of California. The only exception being is that we operate between 7,500 and 12,500 square-foot stores. And, but people have become accustomed to being able to buy all of their products that they need on a day-to-day basis in a small square footage. Some people ask, well, how do you do that? Well, it is simple. We carry toothpaste, and we carry lots of the big brands. But if you go to a grocery store and you stand in front of the toothpaste aisle there, I'm not kidding you, there's like 50 different tubes of toothpaste you could actually purchase. When you get into the mint flavor and the, you know, gel, and you've got Aim, and you've got Crest, and you've got Colgate, and you've got the family size, and you've got the medium size, pretty soon you start doing the math, and you can get to 50 different types of toothpaste that you can buy. We don't carry 50. to the community and support a lot of great causes through corporate giving. And those are just some of the names of the charities that we benefit on an annual basis. This was the, these are some important slides that I wanted to take note of. This is what the inside of a store looks like. And quite honestly, it looks like just about any other grocery store that we may have been in here, used to here in the state of California. The only exception being is that we operate between 7,500 and 12,500 square-foot stores. And, but people have become accustomed to being able to buy all of their products that they need on a day-to-day basis in a small square footage. Some people ask, "Well, how do you do that?" Well, it is simple. We carry toothpaste, and we carry lots of the big brands. But if you go to a grocery store and you stand in front of the toothpaste aisle there, I'm not kidding you, there's like 50 different tubes of toothpaste you could actually purchase. When you get into the mint flavor and the, you know, gel, and you've got AIM, and you've got Crest, and you've got Colgate, and you've got the family size, and you've got the medium size, pretty soon you start doing the math, and you can get to 50 different types of toothpaste that you can buy. We don't carry 50. But we do carry Crest, and we carry Colgate, and we carry AIM, and a few of the other major brands. And we work with those manufacturers closely to find out, what are your customers demanding the most of? And we will carry that, that. Unfortunately, no, we don't carry every flavor, every size, but we carry the most popular sizes and brand names and flavors. So, we're able to dedicate a little less shelf space to the toothpaste. The same is true for soups, the same is true for pasta and pasta sauce, and so on and so forth. But at the end of the day, you can buy toothpaste, you can buy, you know, paper towels, you can buy diapers, and they are the national brands. They just happen to be in the most popular quantities and sizes and flavors in the case of toothpaste. So, I wanted to show you that slide as well as, you know, this slide to just emphasize that we are a food and consumer goods store that carries national products. And each one of these slides, you can see, everybody's familiar with those names, and we offer them at very, very competitive prices. In California, I have noticed that people have a tendency to connotate whenever you have the word "dollar" in your name. There happens to be this particular connotation that you're not selling high-quality products, that you're selling second-run or generic-type of products. And I'm here to assure you that the name Dollar General is, in most parts of the country, you know, associated with great value for your dollar. And we are competitive, and we're certainly not ashamed to admit that, and that we have found that customers seek out stores that carry high-quality products at very, very competitive prices. It has never, I've never been able to understand why you would go to some types of fancy grocery stores and pay $4.50 for a box of Frosted Flakes when you can go to a Dollar General and buy the same box for $2.50. And I don't know what's wrong with that model. There is nothing wrong with that model, but it is what Dollar General has made, you know, their mark on the rest of the country with. And again, it's a smaller store, and people aren't used to being able to have that large of a selection of products in such a small store. I do posit this because, again, it shows, obviously, the different products that we carry, but it also emphasizes the fact that our target customers are the customers that become very, very loyal customers of Dollar General are typically working folks that are shopping for a family, or alternatively, seniors that are on a fixed income. And that is by and large our largest demographic of the type of shoppers that we find in our store. For lack of a better word, it's a soccer mom, or it's senior citizens that are coming into our store on a very frequent basis. And those are exactly the types of products that they're buying from us on a day-to-day basis. As a part of our product offering nationally, several years ago, they adopted beer and wine as a standard product offering in their stores. And in the state of California, many municipalities require that we go through a conditional use permit process. But like every large corporation that has a lot of employees, we take policies and procedures extremely seriously, and we have policies and procedures in place to ensure that we're a responsible seller of beer and wine products. We go through extensive corporate training for all of our employees that handle the sale of beer and wine. We go through weekly training on safety issues with our employees. We have a fiduciary duty to our employees to provide a safe work environment. We have the obligation to train them and create safe environments for them. And we understand that sometimes alcohol can pose a potential issue, and so, we go through great lengths to train our people to make sure that it's a safe environment, not only for our employees, which is our fiduciary responsibility, but it's also our responsibility to our customers. We have found that our customers want to shop in clean stores that are well-lit, that have name brands, and that they feel safe in. And if you don't provide that for the customer demographic that we told you is our customer demographic, they don't come back. And right now, we have 11,000 stores, and I think that we've done an excellent job over the years of perfecting a formula that provides customers with those items. Great value, clean environment to shop in, safe and secure environment, and that does include the stores that we sell beer and wine from. That is a little bit about our training policy. We do internal corporate training. Some communities have also conditioned us and requested that our employees go through the ABC LEAD Training Program, which we're more than amenable to do because it's an extra safeguard for us, and it's an extra safeguard for the community that gives you some assurances that we've trained our employees in a responsible beverage service. We go through a couple of extra steps here to make sure that we don't create any adverse impacts to the local community, because it's important to us, like I said, to make sure that we have a safe and clean environment. We obviously have surveillance cameras all throughout the store. The employees go through the training. We obviously would go through the extra mile and go through the ABC training. We have a point-of-sale system, which, when you go in and you're buying diapers and soup and a bottle of wine, once the bottle of wine is scanned, it prompts you to take the ID and scan it through the system, and it will not allow us to complete the transaction unless the ID is a valid ID. So, we've taken the human element out of carting individuals and placed it onto a, you know, a machine, a computer, to make sure that we don't put an employee in that situation at all. As a standard policy, we don't sell singles of beers, and we sell singles of bottles of wine, but they're minimum 750 milliliters, which is your standard bottle of wine. But we don't sell the malt liquor products. We don't sell beers as singles. We're looking to sell them in 12-packs and those types of packs, because that's what our customers are looking for. We're not looking for the convenience of somebody coming home after work and buying a single. That's not our customer. It's not our customer demand, and that's not how we stock our shelves. Couple of other things that we also do, we don't sell or advertise, you know, outside the store, you know, a poster in the window that says, you know, "A special on a 12-pack of beer." We don't do any of those types of promotions. This is a typical wine shelf in our stores. I do want to emphasize that I believe that our standard policy, and forgive me if I'm off by a foot or two, is that we dedicate three shelving units to the display of beer and wine, and two of our cooler units to the display of beer and wine. And that's it, and we've agreed in many communities to make that a condition of approval so that overnight, we don't get just rows and rows of beer and wine, because it's truly intended to be simply an ancillary and incidental sale to our existing customers who are there buying other products that they use on a day-to-day basis. And they're busy people on constrained budgets, many of them, and they've come to find our store as the place they can get everything in one stop, and they've got 10 minutes to get in and out, because they've got to run somebody, you know, a child to a soccer practice or a music lesson, or they've got to get home and actually prepare a meal for an entire family. And that is our typical beer cooler display. So, with that, I would just like to add that Dollar General stores has proven to be a great addition to every community. And I can't emphasize enough how important it is to us to be able to offer all of the types of products that we know that our customers are looking to get in one location. I can't emphasize enough that we take the responsibility of the sale of alcoholic beverages extremely seriously, and that we're not looking to create a nuisance for the community, and that in our stores that we do sell beer and wine, we have not had reports from the local community that it's become a problem and a nuisance. So, with that, I sincerely appreciate each and every one of your's attention, you know, on my presentation here this evening. On behalf of Dollar General, we would like to locate here in the city of Vista and be able to offer all of the products that we normally offer. And with that, I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have questions, or want to give the speakers first? And then, you'll have time for rebuttal after the speakers.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate your presentation. I just have two questions out of curiosity. The first one was, you mentioned that you have no stores in San Diego County at this point, and Vista would be your first one. Did I get that right?
That is my understanding, yes. That is correct.
How did you come to choose Vista out of every place in San Diego County to make your first store?
Well, I think that they were, they're looking to roll out Dollar General stores kind of equally throughout the state, not just in San Diego County to start, and then we work our way north, and not work our way from the north to the south. It was important for us to identify locations in potentially kind of every county, I mean, not every county, but every geographical region. And Vista, being a north county and it's a suburban type of setting with a lot of families here that are demographic, you probably will not find our stores in places like downtown San Francisco or downtown San Diego. Our model is much more of a suburban-type of model, and that Vista represented a good opportunity to meet the needs of our typical customer. And there's other communities, obviously, throughout, you know, San Diego County that we would certainly like to open up stores in.
Okay. Thank you for that one. My second one, also just out of curiosity. If the council should deny your alcohol use permit, would you continue with the project without alcohol?
It is my understanding from the, an email that I received from the folks in the real estate department, that they would probably withdraw and not proceed with opening the store without the ability to sell beer and wine.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your attention.
So, if I have no other questions, then I'll go to the speakers. Okay. And then, you can have rebuttal. Okay. Okay, so I have now, and we'll do the speakers. I hear from the public on this item, and they're allowed three minutes of speaking time. So, Renee Glatsbaugh, sorry, I didn't mean to be premature in that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And staff. Please deny PCA 262 Dollar General store at 1234 North Santa Fe to sell beer and wine for off-site. 24/7 strong as our Vista Unified School District students, parents, teachers, staff want to be safe. Safe walking, safe motorist, safe streets, safe bicyclists, safe shoppers, safe homes, safe living. Our Vista has 11 known sober living. Our Vista needs to help find supervisor Dave Roberts. Sober, safe homes for trustworthy foster parents, for voices for children to always be safe in our Vista community. It is known that this license overcrowd the area, and there are six off-sales beer and wine on South Santa Fe, or spilling over on the five already, on the many that are already on North Santa Fe, taking away the rights of every man, woman, and child to be safe in our Vista, which we don't want that to do. The time and place is now to stop future off-sales beer and wine from proceeding in our Vista. Please do the right vote for safety and vote for our NO PCA 262 for quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glatsbaugh. Erica Leary, followed by Nanette Stam.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Erica Leary, and I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and we greatly appreciate your accommodating us to share with you this PowerPoint this evening. As you probably know, the North Coastal Prevention Coalition's been around for over 20 years, serving the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista, and we've received multiple local and national awards, most recently being named the Public Health Champion by the County of San Diego in 2013. We're funded in part by the County of San Diego Health and Human Services Agency to support the county's initiatives to prevent and reduce alcohol and other drug problems. This includes focusing on environments such as retail and commercial environments, social environments, and public environments. The Binge and Underage Drinking Initiative is the county's oldest initiative and the largest due to the impacts of alcohol in our communities. It's been around since 1995. Our mission here at NCPC is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. And our vision reflects the fact that partnerships and collaboration are required to prevent and reduce substance abuse. It's a problem that impacts everyone, and everyone has a role to play in preventing the problem, from individuals, including teens, like those here this evening, families, schools, businesses, law enforcement, government, and media. Like most areas of the country, alcohol is the most abused drug by young people, and it has been for decades, in large part because it is relatively cheap, widely available, and heavily promoted and advertised. It's also associated with the leading causes of death for teens and young adults, including motor vehicle crashes, homicides, and suicides. So, what does that mean for us here in Vista? According to data from the Sheriff's Department collected between January 2009 and June 2011, Vista was at the top of the list of all sheriff contract cities for drunken public violations involving minors, DUIs involving minors, minor and possession violations, and second only to the unincorporated area for social host or house party violations. So, what do you do as city officials and as community members to address this problem? The old adage of "It takes a village" comes to mind and may be appropriate, and that includes involving parents, teachers, law enforcement, youth-serving organizations, and businesses. But the actual structure of our village also plays a key role, and you, as our city leaders, create that structure. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Nanette Stam to share some national research findings on alcohol density.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nanette Stam, and I'm the director of the Health Promotion Center at Vista Community Clinic. Vista Community Clinic also serves as a fiscal agent for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition. And like Erica said, I'm going to talk a little bit about the research behind alcohol outlet density. And at the Health Promotion Center, we have a wide array of programs that we utilize research-based approaches to improve community health. And what we know is that simply telling kids that alcohol, tobacco, and drugs are unhealthy and potentially dangerous is not enough. The community environment, which influences access and availability, play a key role in rates of use. California's tobacco control movement provides a clear example of this. Changes in the environment, such as eliminating tobacco, vending machines, self-service displays, and indoor smoking, as well as increasing prices through taxes, has led to California having the second-lowest smoking rate in the country. Research studies have concluded that communities having larger number of stores selling alcohol are more likely to have higher levels of youth access to alcohol. And I just want to stop there and say, it's actually the number of alcohol stores, not the type of stores, or how well they manage the sales of alcohol. It's just the sheer numbers what the research shows. Another study in New Jersey found that alcohol outlet density, that is, the number of stores selling alcohol per a given area, was the single greatest predictor of violent crime. And based on these and other studies, the U.S. Task Force on Community Prevention Services concludes that limiting on- and off-premise alcohol outlet density can be effective means of reducing the harms associated with excessive alcohol consumption. The Task Force is an independent, non-federal, unpaid panel of public health and prevention experts that provides evidence-based findings and recommendations about community preventive services, programs, and policies to improve health. Implementing the Task Force recommendations by limiting density growth may be an important role for local officials to take in order to make an impact on underage drinking and excessive alcohol consumption in our community of Vista. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to John Byram, who's a prevention specialist with North Coastal Prevention Coalition.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. NCP recognizes that all sectors of our community play an important role in preventing underage drinking, and by using local land use authority and zoning regulations, local officials can take action to prevent underage drinking. Your recent adoption of standards, conditions for alcohol outlets, and local permitting process to increase local control of alcohol sales is a great example of Vista taking leadership in the role of in the role of preventing alcohol-related problems. There we go. Local oversight of alcohol retailers also supports goals of the healthy Vista element in an important section of Vista's general plan. I had the opportunity to visit some of the nearby alcohol retailers. These slides illustrate the alcohol as already readily available in the community. The Arco AMPM is located within 500 feet of the same shopping center as the proposed location. City staff recommended denial of this permit back in February 2010, but the permit was issued. There are now ads for alcohol on the windows, large displays of beer, and several coolers of beer and wine making alcohol readily available in the area, and I'm talking stacks of beer Because this location is high, is in a high-crime, over-concentrated area, ABC would require a local government to make a determination of public convenience and necessity before issuing an alcohol license. So many other retailers close, with so many other retailers close by, housed is inexpensive alcohol in a high-crime area a matter of public convenience and necessity. The staff recommendations to deny the special-use permit for beer and wine sales is not a criticism of any one particular business operation, but acknowledgement that increasing alcohol availability impacts our entire community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. We have one additional speaker, Arubey Lopez.
Hello, Council and Mayor. My name is Arubey Lopez. I am a Vista resident, and I am also a candidate for Vista City Council. I'm here tonight to express my opposition to granting Dollar General the liquor license. My job as an attorney is to work with victims of domestic violence. My clients are mostly women who have been battered by drunken husbands. I see every day the consequences of alcohol. It endangers lives, destroys families, creates drunk drivers, and keeps poor people poor. Adding another liquor store in Vista makes absolutely no sense. Adding another liquor store in that area that is mostly poor and Latino and already high, high problems with alcoholism shows a disregard for the community. The presentation said that the demographic for the Dollar General was soccer moms and senior citizens, yet the area they chose, mostly low-income and people living under the, below the poverty rate, shows their true demographic. In addition to my opposition to the liquor license, I also want to express my opposition to the Dollar General, to the Dollar General in general. The Dollar General stores are exactly the kind of business we do not want in Vista. They pay terrible wages, they sell junk food that makes our kids obese and cause diabetes, they sell junk products that are many times toxic, and the ultimate goal is to sell alcohol in Vista. If that was, they, in the presentation, they said that alcohol was an ancillary product. If it was an ancillary product, why do they say that they won't open in Vista unless they get the license? Dollar stores will sell anything to make a buck, but they make more than a buck. They make millions while poor communities suffer. City staff and the planning commission have both concluded that granting the liquor license would be a terrible thing for the city. City staff and the planning commission are both in place to assist you in making your decision. In order for them to do their job well, they require that you show deference to their rationale. In conclusion, I ask that you deny the Dollar General license to operate in Vista, but definitely deny their liquor license. The city needs to start looking out for the health of its residents, deny this license, and start looking for ways to crack down on all the other liquor stores in the city. My name is Arubey Lopez, and I oppose the liquor license. Thank you.
The applicant will now present rebuttal testimony.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit more, and I appreciate everybody's comments. And a couple of pieces of information I do want to share. I work in a lot of communities and work with a lot of different police departments and policing agents, and one thing that I have found over and over again is that those, those areas, the crime beat areas, that happen to encapsulate a lot of the commercial properties, typically by and large have higher incidences of crimes than you do in the, in the beat areas that carry most of your residential property. It's just simply because you have more loitering calls, you have vandalism calls, you have graffiti calls. Those are the types of things that you don't necessarily see in residential communities, and it's not necessarily a reflection on the alcohol. It just happens through zoning. We place all of our commercial property in certain corridors, and when they do census tracts, census tracts are pretty, pretty much zoning-blind. They draw lines to encapsulate a certain population number, and if that line and that population segment happens to encompass a lot of your commercially-zoned properties, oftentimes you find an over-concentration state, you oftentimes find higher crime rates. But I would submit to you that through effective planning and good planning, most of, most of the cities have a tendency to locate their commercial businesses along certain corridors or in strategic corners, and see if that's where you'll find your gas stations, your restaurants, your retailers. And so what happens is you do get some skewed information. I believe it's a little bit skewed because you have the commercial properties concentrated, and as a result, you do get the over-concentration state, and you do get the higher crime rates associated with where more of your commercially-zoned property sits. So I find that to be true in most communities, and so I have had to address this. There are some communities I've worked in, the community I happen to live in, which is up in Marietta, we have, one of our census tracts has 18 licenses, when there's only like five that are supposed to be, you know, that are, that are by the ABC guidelines. But the other three census tracts in our community have zero licenses because that's where all the residential are. And if you came to Marietta and said, gee, it's an over-concentrated place, I would say it's really not, it's just that we've concentrated our commercial property into that particular area. And if you looked at our crime statistics, and I'm very familiar with our crime statistics, I live there, I'm very active in our community, our crime statistics are certainly higher in those areas that are, that have more of our commercial properties. And again, it's because of those types of calls there. So I do realize that this is in a census tract that is over-concentrated and does have a higher crime rate, but I would say that that's a snapshot of a small, little area there, and that, that it's, it's due to the fact that it's commercial property in general that is there, and by zoning, you've, you've created a situation in which the people that do want to sell alcohol are in those areas. You know, with that, I certainly appreciate the efforts of groups that are very, very conscientious about alcohol and substance abuse in our community. Dollar General is also. I personally have served on board of directors of an agency that is very, very similar to the agency that spoke this evening. We have the distinct distinction of being the largest treater of youths for substance abuse. In Riverside County, we treated 1,200 kids one year, and we take that very, very serious, I take it very seriously as a person, and Dollar General does too. That the, you know, ancillary sale to somebody who is, who's clearly intending to bring that home and enjoy a bottle of wine with a dinner, we could probably debate for years as to whether or not that's, that's adding to, you know, problems that we have seen in our society. One caveat, one anecdotal piece of information, I've seen a lot of statistics, I've seen a lot of studies, and one study, every study that I see talks about concentrations and densities and relates it to crime and, and problems in society. But I always go back to the same thing of saying, I've visited dry counties throughout the South. I have a friend of mine, he's a police officer, in a dry county in Texas. So if there is a correlation between outlets and crime, then I guess we should be able to go to that dry county in Texas and not run into any of those problems. And yet, I know in person, and they still deal with the same issues that communities like Vista do. And I certainly think that communities that go through the extra mile of putting people through the conditional use permit are doing a justice, and one thing that the, that the studies have not gone through great lengths to do is see the effects of the outlets that are subject to conditions of approval versus the outlets that are not. And every community I've worked in has those. They have those legacy businesses that began, got their license to sell alcohol back in the 60s. There were very, there were no conditions of approval placed on them. You have restaurants and bars that are operating without conditions of approvals, and just in talking to law enforcement agency after law enforcement agency, by and large, those places seem to be the places that they get the calls for service for. But the businesses that have been subjected to a condition of approval process that allows the local municipality to have some real teeth in monitoring their conduct certainly have a much, much smaller impact, adverse impact on the community. And a lot of these national studies have not incorporated, in fact, I haven't seen one that has differentiated between businesses that have operated without conditions of approval versus the ones that do. I've seen a lot of these studies that deal with urban and metropolitan areas, and I would submit to you, I saw a study recently, and they were comparing a study in Newark, New Jersey, and this was in a suburban community, and I, I said, gee, I've been to Newark, New Jersey, and there's not a lot of similarities between your, your, your community and Newark, New Jersey. So sometimes you have to ferret out the difference between urban environments and much more suburban environments that implement controls at a, at a local level, you know, such as making sure that stores are closed at a certain hour, limiting the amount of shelf space, and so on and so forth. That's very good public policy. I also consult with communities when they're looking at their alcohol code. So with that said, again, I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration, and I appreciate the time that you've given me here this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now it's time for our council discussion. They can ask questions of staff, the applicant, or the public for clarification of issues. And so, Council, what is your pleasure? Anybody? Or if not, then I would entertain a motion if nobody... Okay. Councilmember Regulera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I will say that the 25 violations nationwide since 2009 and 11,000 stores is pretty impressive. It does sound like a very responsible organization. Unfortunately, we've got a, an area that's already impacted with stores. I live close to this area, so I'm very familiar. You know, many people have spoken about, you know, the area and the type of people that live there, and I think you will find soccer moms down there, because I think just because you're Latino doesn't mean you can't be a soccer mom. And you're going to find seniors there, too. So I, you know, kind of took offense to that. But having said that, I think this area has enough liquor stores or availability of liquor in the area, and, you know, I think problem drinkers, they're going to find it. It doesn't matter if it's at Dollar General, the AMPM, Royal Liquor, wherever. So you got, if you got a problem, you're going to find it. It doesn't matter if you have eight stores there, or 18 stores, or just one, or you have to go to the next county. So I don't really think that's the issue, but we have rules in this city to protect our citizens, and one of those rules is that the city council gets to take a look at a situation, and stores like Dollar General get to propose, you know, to have an exception. But I think because of the crime rate that we have there and the fact that it's gone up, that doesn't make it a very good decision for our citizens. So I will be denying the beer and wine license. I am in support of Dollar General opening a store, but without beer and wine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes. One of the things that the applicant brought up in his rebuttal is, he mentioned that the crime, high-crime beats tend to be commercial areas, but you know, when you look at this map for the crime beats for the city of Vista, many of the areas that have this higher crime are in residential areas, and a lot of those residential areas are adjacent to corridors that have an already abundant and over-concentration of off-site sale licenses. All the research that, that I've seen over the years, and it's included in this staff report, clearly indicates that if we have an over-concentration, we're only going to exacerbate the crime issue in our community by adding additional off-site sale locations. And one of the conditions that we'd have to find to approve the off-site sale license for this location is that it would contribute to the public convenience or necessity. I don't see how that is a finding that we could possibly make, because basically, right across the street is another off-site sale location. You walk another couple hundred feet, there's another location. There are numerous off-site sale locations, not only within the census tract that would become even far more over-concentrated, but on this roadway next to the proposed location in general. The crime rate is exceedingly high at 185.6% of citywide average. Combine those two factors together, and there's no way, in my opinion, that adding an additional off-site sale location would add anything to the general welfare positively for the city of Vista. One of the other issues, in my opinion, with this type of location is that, in general, the entire city has a number of licenses that are in census tracts that are over-concentrated, and I can't in good conscious, conscience, vote to add an additional off-site sales license to an area that's already over-concentrated.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. We heard good presentations, both, both by the applicant and those who are concerned about the, the alcohol licensing that goes along with the store. We've spent a lot of years in Vista developing our zoning areas, zoning standards, and our standards for alcohol licensing, and we're already basically over-concentrated in that area with the standard that we've set. To move against that, I think, would be not a good move on the part of the city, and I like the idea of the type of store and the location to serve the residents and the neighbors in that area. So I would actually move to approve the store, but not the alcohol license, licensing that has been requested to go with that.
I'll second it.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
John second.
Oh, you did, John? Okay. Seeing no other further speakers.
Can you repeat the motion as you stated it again for me, please?
To approve the Dollar General store, but not the alcohol permit application that goes with it.
It's identical to the staff.
Identical to the staff's recommendation.
I would make a substitute motion to split the two resolutions into two votes, if that's possible. possible.
Do I have a second on that?
I would also prefer that we vote on these two issues separately.
Okay, so a motion and a second, so we need to vote on that first? Okay. Yes. Councilmember Aguilera?
What's the purpose? Why are we splitting it up?
Because I would prefer that they both be voted on separately, because the votes may reflect different positions on each individual item.
I agree. I think we have two separate issues before us, and I think they deserve a separate vote on each one.
Okay, so we'll vote, we're going to vote on this, that we're going to accept the substitute motion, correct? Yes, we're going to vote, we're going to accept the substitute motion. So everybody in favor of the substitute motion, please vote.
Mr. City Attorney, I have a question. As this was a substitute motion, would we not be voting on, are we voting on the substitute motion, or are we having a substitute motion, voting on each of these items individually?
The substitute motion, as I understood it, was to divide the vote between the two motions, so if the council wishes to do that, that would be the first vote.
Then we have to vote two more times after that, right?
Right.
Yes.
Well, you have two separate issues in front of you, and I think that's only fair that we address them separately.
Okay, cast your votes, please.
What am I voting on right now? To split the, to split this into two?
You're voting on whether we want a substitute motion or not.
Yes, if you want to split.
Oh, then clear that. It's okay. Okay, so that motion passes. So then we're going to separate the motions. So I need a motion for, any motions?
Okay, I would like to move that for, we adopt the city council resolution granting the special-use permit for the Bargain Basement Store.
For alcohol sales?
We just separated those two votes. This is strictly on allowing or not allowing the store to exist.
Does your motion include closing the public hearing?
Yes, I'm sorry. I also move that we close the public hearing and approve the special-use permit for the Bargain Basement Store.
I'll second it.
Please cast your votes.
I need to ask a question. Approving the special-use permit, is that, that's just for the store itself? That has nothing to, okay.
Right. Okay. Okay, so that motion passes with one no vote. Need another motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny special-use permit for off-site sale of beer and wine for Dollar General at 1234 North Santa Fe.
Second.
That motion passes with one no vote. Okay, so now we go for oral communications, and I don't really have any oral communication from anyone, so, unless there's someone that wants to speak. So I guess we go to council remarks, and I will just do my announcements real quick here, and then we'll get council remarks. So we'll welcome back all of our students today. If you have a child in grades K through six, the Vista Library offers free homework every Monday through Thursday after school from 3:30 to 5:00. Catch Me If You Can begins at the Moonlight Amphitheater tomorrow evening. This is the last summer production of the year, and it starts at 7:30 rather than 8:00, so I have to remind everybody of that. In addition, the 2015 Winter Season at the AVO has been announced. There are three productions: James Goldman's Line in the Winter, Sondheim on Sondheim, and the final show of the season, the Pulitzer Prize-winning play Anna and the Tropics. And ticket information is online at themoonlightstage.com. And finally, our $3.6 million street improvement project is underway around town and will be completed by the end of the year, and you've probably seen lots of streets overlaid, and we're doing lots of work still on those. Work completed includes Sunset Drive, Taylor Street, Olive Avenue, Live Oak Road, Shatteridge Drive, streets around Vista High School. We thank you in advance for your patience as we work to improve our streets, and you can check all the road improvement projects online at cityofvista.com under construction projects. And with that, I will go down the row, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comments.
Coles?
No comments.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, yes, I do have a couple of comments. First, I want to say welcome to all the students here. It's really wonderful to see you all here. I know you are here to get your school credit, but it's really nice to have you here anyway, and so welcome to a council meeting, and I hope you come back. I just wanted to let the council and the community know that this last week, the city manager and I spent a few days up in Los Angeles at the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And one of the things that we got to do was take a tour of the Los Angeles City Emergency Operations Center, which was very fascinating, but I have to say, aside from some, the scale of it, having, what, 100 and some chairs, they got nothing on Vista. Just saying. We do a good job here. There were a lot of things that we talked about at the conference. One of them was something that I have talked about with staff over the last two years, and that was a mobile device application for city services contacting the city, finding the hiking trails or biking trails, et cetera. And I attended two really good workshops on that, I think, as well as the city manager did, about what works in some cities, what might not be working, what people really want versus what the city wants to do. So that was, that was interesting. There was one vote, one resolution that the Board of Directors voted on, and that was to support the water bond. And then the general membership, there was only one resolution that we voted on, and that was asking the governor to form a stakeholders committee to review the rules and regulations for marijuana use in California, and to discuss the laws, the enforcement, the crime issues, et cetera, with law enforcement. So that passed almost unanimously. I think there was one no vote on that. So we'll see what happens over the next year if the governor does put together a stakeholders committee to review other issues regarding medical use of marijuana in California. So with that, that's what I did last week, and I wanted to let you know what we discussed. So thank you very much, and again, thank you to city staff for all of your hard work.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh, no, we are not.
I got a couple things to say.
Councilmember, or not councilmember.
City manager.
City manager Patrick Johnson has something to say, some announcements.
I'll try to make it quick. You mentioned checking the website for updates on the construction activity. We also just recently put our interactive GIS maps on the internet for you to see, so you could see property zoning information, as well as all of our sewer infrastructure information, which is on the website. And I wanted to let everybody know, this Thursday marks the 13th anniversary of the attacks on the United States, the 9/11 attacks. And so we want to thank all of our servicemen and women who are protecting our borders, as well as here, our public safety officials who are protecting us at home. And I did want to welcome three individuals. And one is our newest addition to the Sheriff's Department in terms for Vista, which is our new captain, Larry Nesbit, who is in the back there standing up. Captain Nesbit has been with the Sheriff's Department for over 28 years. He's worked in Vista as a deputy, as a cops deputy, in many roles throughout the department. We're happy to have him. He's replacing outgoing Sheriff's Captain Joe Rody, who got transferred to the Regional Training Center. And Captain Rody did a fabulous job in Vista with crime at its all-time low right now. So a good time to be coming in as captain for Captain Nesbit. Also want to welcome our new lieutenant, Scott Black, who's in the back there as well. As many of you know, Lieutenant Black has worked in Vista for almost 20 years alone in Vista, which is almost unheard of within the Sheriff's Department, so we're glad to have Lieutenant Black back in Vista. And last, but not least, is Tony Winnie in the back. Stand up if you would, Tony. Tony is our new assistant to the city manager, and many of you might remember Tony, back in about 2008, was last here as a management analyst in the city manager's office. And Tony went off to a couple of other cities within the county to gain broader experience, and now we're excited to have him back as the assistant to the city manager. So those are some updates.
So our attorney, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing to have this evening. Thank you.
About our city clerk? Either one? No, no? Okay. Okay, then, we are adjourned now, for sure.